On the meeting to order. It's a meeting of April 16th. We'll note that all commissioners are present. And the first item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business? Not, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
So motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion carries. We'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? If not, would there be a motion then to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to tab four, the non timetable agenda. And the first item we have there is to hear our financial report. So Mrs. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. I'd like to highlight a few items from the financial report through March. We'll begin with the general fund report. With 25 percent of the year completed, our property taxes equal $3.1 million, and were 96 percent collected compared to budget. Our other taxes and fees, which include things like financial institution tax and franchise fees, is 52 percent collected compared to budget. Our financial institution tax is $84,000 for the year, which is a 23 percent increase over last year. Our intergovernmentals include revenues we receive from the state and local governments, such as highway distribution tax and oil production tax, and is 10 percent collected compared to budget. Our licenses, fees, and services include such things as building permit revenue and oil royalties, and is 27 percent collected compared to budget. Our building permit revenue is up $183,000 over last year. This category also includes our municipal court fines, which are $50,000 more than last year. Our sales of city lots and equipment, we have sold approximately $1 million of city lots through March. And our total general fund revenues equal $5.3 million, and were 48 percent collected compared to budget. Our general fund expenses are broken down by groups. They include general government, which includes administration, court, finance, and buildings and sites, and is 27 percent expended compared to budget. This overage is due mostly to timing. Our public safety includes police and fire, and is 24 percent expended compared to budget. Our engineering and streets is 22 percent expended. And our cultural services, which includes museum and forestry, is 19 percent expended compared to budget. Our total general fund expenses equal $2.4 million through March, and were 21 percent expended compared to budget. In our enterprise funds, our water and wastewater revenues equal $1.9 million through March, and were 30 percent collected compared to budget, and 50 percent more than last year. The increase is due to increasing bulk water sales. Our expenses and capital outlays total $1.4 million, which is 26 percent expended compared to budget.
I have a question. On the water wastewater fund, I think I saw in your notes somewhere that some of the capital projects, like the third cell improvement, and I think it was a water main or replacement, are you planning to finance that?
The third cell improvement is already financed through the SRF.
We've already done that, so.
Correct.
Okay.
The water main is not financed yet, I believe. But I do believe that is the intent.
You do intend to finance that?
Correct.
And approximately, what is the amount?
That I don't have.
Do you know, Mr. Sorin?
I don't know off the top of my head. We've got three projects in works right now.
Okay.
Our solid waste fund revenues total $814,000 through March, which are 29 percent collected compared to budget, and 47 percent more than last year. The large increase is mostly attributed to added commercial accounts. Our expenses and capital outlays total $626,000, which is 23 percent expended compared to budget. In our sales tax reports, the sales tax information was updated for March on the sheets you received this evening. Our 1 percent sales tax fund shows we received $423,000 of revenue in March, which is up 56 percent for the year. Expenses include $220,000 paid towards job creation and senior programs. In our half percent sales tax, we received $211,000 of revenue in March, which is also up 56 percent for the year. In our hospitality tax, we received $103,000 of revenue in March, which is up 52 percent over last year. Our expenses include $155,000 paid to the airport and Parks and Rec for their one-time Our occupancy tax breakdown shows revenues totaled $77,000 in March, and were up 86 percent over last year. Our expenses include $85,000 paid to the CBB for their subsidy, and $60,000 for the special events grant. In our street projects report, we received $55,000 in revenues, and we have expended $56,000 towards those projects through March. In our development impact fee program, this schedule shows the projects that have been approved and the funds available for future projects. This program has a balance of $1,158,000 for commitment at the end of February. The March data was not available for this meeting, but will be updated for the April statements. Those are some of the highlights of the financial statements. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Are there any questions? We, it said there were two claims in the wastewater backup fund. What kind of incident did we have there?
I believe there will actually be seven, six or seven claims, that will be coming from that incident.
I believe it is seven. We did have a large grease block up in one of our sewer mains that did create a backup situation. And we've had to really start working with some of our restaurant areas on trying to mitigate the amount of waste that is getting put into our wastewater facility. The guys have been working hard on tracking that back, and I think they're, have a pretty good idea where the incident's generated. And we're looking at things that we need to do to maybe get back into the restaurants to make sure of proper disposal.
And what is the proper way for restaurants to dispose of their waste grease?
There's a company that'll come around and pick it up, and take it off-site, recycle it. I do know in the past, we've had a couple places where they went to the point of even removing their stools to dump it down the drain. So we're needing to crack down on that to try and stop that problem.
And if, can we take any enforcement action, penalty action, if we're sure who's done this?
Currently, we go back and bill them directly for those incidents if we can do that. Charge them for the cleanup costs, as well as any damages that we can do. We're certainly evaluating that situation to make sure that we're doing as much as we can. I do know in other jurisdictions, some of the things they do is they look at a, maybe a biannual cleaning, and then charge that back to the restaurant district as a separate fee from their direct wastewater fee, which might be an incentive to get them to have grease traps and utilize them. If they're not maintaining them, then fees associated with that as well.
Mr. Coling, could, can the city require the firms that run the service of collecting grease like this, report to the city who their customers are, so we would know who is disposing of the grease properly? And then we could assume if it's not being collected, they're not disposing of the grease properly.
Yes, Mr. President, I believe that's within the jurisdiction, authority of the city to do something like that. I don't believe we have anything in ordinance to that effect yet, but we could put something together to require that.
Because these two incidences alone are, if I read this right, that's $15,000. $7,500 each?
Correct. And that is the maximum they can ask for.
And you have maybe four or five other claims coming?
Yes, we do have additional ones in. And some of those are above the $7,500. Obviously, our ordinance allows us to pay up to the $7,500, but there was one that came in and spoke, said they had damages in excess of $20,000.
Okay. Well, maybe we have to look at a little different process. So we have a pretty good idea who is disposing of their waste properly, and then I think we would assume that if you're not on the list to properly dispose, we would have to assume you're doing it improperly. But I mean, this is a lot of dollars, and I'm sure for the homeowners that had this happen, it's no fun. Well, that was the only other question I had on the financial report. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Would there be a motion then to approve the report as presented?
So move.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item B is a design policy change related to park dedication and new plaits. And Mr. Coling, I believe you're introducing this item.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. The proposed ordinance here makes several changes to the city's design policy regarding parkland. This ordinance would require developers of new residential subdivisions to convey at least 7 percent of the land that they are developing to the park district for park purposes. Current ordinance is 5 percent, requires a 5 percent dedication, so this ordinance would increase that to 7 percent. The ordinance also permits the park district to accept a cash and lieu payment in the event that the park district does not desire to develop a park within this proposed residential development. And the fee for that cash and lieu payment is incorporated within the city's fee schedule and can be adjusted on an annual basis. This ordinance also assesses an offsite impact fee to developers of industrial and commercial properties. The amount of the offsite assessment to commercial and industrial properties for park purposes is also going, would be incorporated into the city's fee schedule and could be adjusted annually as well. Those are the general over, or general highlights and overview of this proposed ordinance. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Are there any comments or questions from commissioners? Not, the chair would entertain a public comment on this proposed ordinance. If you would like to comment, just step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your There's no one from the public that would like to comment. I think we've had at least one public hearing on this, it's been on the agenda two or three times. Any comments by commissioners? Not, would there be a motion regarding the second reading and final passage of ordinance 1451?
I'll move.
Mr. President? Mr. Steiner?
Move to approve. Second reading and final passage of ordinance number 1451. Now, second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. The next item then, item C, is related to this item, and Mr. Kessel, are you presenting that?
Excuse me, Attorney Coling will be presenting that one as well.
Okay.
Mr. President, Commissioners, the proposed resolution incorporates the fees for cash and lieu payment and offsite impact assessment into the city's annual fee schedule. The cash and lieu payment is set at $500 per lot for R1 properties, $600 per lot for R2 properties, $700 per lot for R3 properties, and $500 per living unit for mobile home zone properties. The offsite assessment fee for commercial and industrial properties is set in this resolution at $500 per acre. Those fees would be assessed upon final plat recording, and that is when the developer would be responsible to make those cash and lieu or offsite assessment payments. And these fees, as we mentioned, can be adjusted in the city's fee schedule at the discretion of the city commission. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Coling. And what is the resolution number here?
Mr. President, this will be Resolution 11-2012.
Okay, you've heard Mr. Coling's introduction. Are there any comments or questions by commissioners?
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
You know, even since we started moving this ordinance through, we're seeing a number of plaits with R3 properties that are several acres in size, and in fact, we've got some entire subdivisions that are one lot and one block, and they're entirely R3. I'm thinking of one that I think's going to have over 400 apartments on it. And it's giving me a little pause, about $700 per lot. The park board consider that when you were working with them, Mr. Coling?
Commissioner Jackson, I'm not sure what the park board discussed, or what sort of thought process they went through. I know that they have seen the fee schedule, and at least approved it in concept, but whether they were thinking about the precise situation you're talking of, I can't speak to.
Any thoughts, Mr. Cortan?
With respect to your question, Commissioner Jackson, I know we discussed it initially. Coming back to that specific one, it would appear, you know, based upon that, that yes, the one that we're talking about is the one that's coming to planning commission on Wednesday, that they would get a significant reduction compared to somebody that's maybe splitting up a lot. It may be more of an oversight, it may get lost in the shuffle. I think that with respect to your question, and you bring up a very valid question, that maybe we should have an additional one to that, 700 per lot, or, you know, or a $700 figure per 10 units. The lot side of it makes it easy to determine that figure at final plat stage. If you determine them by units, and that was part of the discussion, you would have to collect that fee at building permit issuance, because you're not going to know necessarily how many units they're going to have until they have come through with their building plans. And that's, that could be done, it's just an additional monitoring process. So I'm not, I'm not opposed, and I think that maybe discussion is necessary with respect to that. We could have a two-tiered process to address that, and that may also be true for R2 as well, because you could have up to 10 units per lot. And that may be, it's worth the discussion. I know we have a lot of ones that are coming down the pipe. My suggestion would be approve it tonight if you feel comfortable with an idea that we could bring that discussion back to the parks district, and it could be modified at the next, you know, next month's meeting accordingly.
Would it, would it make sense, instead of a per lot basis, to do it on a per square foot basis? Would you know the square footage?
We wouldn't know the square footage. We have preliminary ideas whenever somebody's coming in with apartments, but those all change after you start the whole approval process. They may find out that they have to modify their plans because they don't meet setbacks, or they have to put an additional landscape in or parking. So you really can't base it upon that initial process. Probably the units, it makes the most sense on a staffing level. It's just that you wouldn't collect it upfront. When the final plat's done, you would have to collect it at building permit stage. It's a little, little more difficult to do. I mean, it takes a little more staff time, but it can be accomplished, and that's, I don't see that as being an obstacle in any way. The intent is to try to get an accurate, an accurate fill, or an accurate fee with respect to people. And probably that 700 is not going to be an accurate representation when you talk about multifamily compared to single family. So I'll leave it up to the commission to decide if you want to do it, and we could bring it up, and then maybe come back with a modification. It's a little awkward that way, but at least we have this in, as we move forward with some final plats that'll be coming our way in the very near future, and then come back with a clear, clear explanation with respect to fees.
I'm just a little afraid if we approve the entire schedule here, that we could be sending some signals we might not want to send. I wonder if we should leave R2 and R3 out of our approval right now.
Commissioner Jackson, if I may, I was involved in conversations with Scott Kovach and James Kramer. They are well aware of the potential implication, as you just mentioned. We had the conversation almost exactly how Mr. Cortan has explained it, and because of the difficulties and the time of payment, and a whole bunch of other things, they were willing to accept this document, those two. I can't say that the park board in general, but I can say that those two were willing to accept the ordinance as writ, knowing it's not perfect.
In the last couple, three months, we've gotten some real examples of these really significant R3 projects that maybe we didn't have when you guys were talking about it. The one I'm thinking about, you could have 1,000 people in that one lot.
And you're certainly right, Commissioner Jackson. The planning and zoning has been very dynamic.
Yeah. I don't know. I, I think we need to look at this again, and I defer to you guys as to how you think we should do this.
We would have roughly two weeks till our next meeting, maybe, maybe three. If we pass this resolution tonight, could you have a replacement resolution in three weeks, so you'd have this for a three-week interim? Unless you want to take a stab at modifying?
No, that's fine. Everybody's.
Mr. President, the only item to tonight that would be affected is outside the city limit, so it's not going to pertain to this anyway. So delaying it to the next meeting is not going to, not going to adversely impact any of our subsequent final plats that'll be coming through.
So why don't we, if you're in agreement, pass this tonight? This is in place, and staff and Mr. Coling can work on a resolution that would just essentially replace the R2 and the R3 fees here, probably on a per-unit basis, or something close to that. Yeah, because if, I think they're just assuming that these would be normal-sized lots, and if we're going to get one lot that'll house a thousand apartment units, that's, that's not quite right then. What do you think? Should we do that?
I think that's the way we're going to do it.
Okay. So this is, this is Resolution 11-2012. Would there be a motion regarding it?
I'll make the motion.
We have the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And we have the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Then we'll go to item D, which is an agreement regarding the streetscape surrounding the ALX building. And Mr. Kessel, you're presenting that.
Thank you, President Johnson, Commissioners. The agreement that you have before you is regarding the streetscaping around the ALX building, as President Johnson mentioned. There's several items of review. The first one is the developer must submit the plans for the streetscaping updates to Engineer Sorin. He must then approve of those plans. If he does approve those plans, then the developer can bid that work, and the city then will reimburse up to $82,500, which is an amount that we've carried for some time that's been dedicated to this project. We will then reimburse the developer for the expenses incurred of the approved plans. So if there's work done outside of those plans that haven't been approved, then we don't make a payment on those amounts. We also have a provision that says that all of the streetscaping improvements must be completed by June 30th of 2012. If those plans are not executed by that date, the city reserves the right to use those funds in another way, not necessarily dedicated to this project any further. So those are the main components of the agreement. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them. We recommend approval this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. You heard his report and recommendation. Do you have any comments or questions?
Mr. President, I assume the developer has seen this agreement?
Yes, Commissioner Jackson, yes. The approve, the developer has seen the agreement and does approve of its wordage.
Any other comments, questions? Would there be a motion then regarding this agreement?
I'll move.
We move to approve agreement. Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Is there a second?
Second.
And we have the second. Any discussion? No discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. So we'll go to item E, which is the City Hall remodel bid award. And Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Johnson. This, this bid award is for the renovation of the basement of City Hall. We, due to staff increases, running out of space on our main level, this would add about 6,000 usable space and about seven to 10 offices. We did, using Halsing as our architect, we did bid this project, and Ainsworth Benning is the low bidder for general construction. That amount is $196,302. Central Mechanical out of Mandan is the low bid on mechanical construction at $89,900. And Berger Electric from Dickinson is the low electrical bid at $58,400. We did use a questionnaire as part of this bid process, where they had to let us know where some of their other projects they've worked on, so that we could do our due diligence in making sure that they're all reputable builders and have a good track record. That due diligence all came back fine, and so we are recommending the bid award as it appears before you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. You've heard his report. Again, are there any comments or questions? Would there, if there are no comments or questions, would there be a motion to approve the bid awards?
I'll move. We award the project to the three contractors listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. And any discussion? Mr. Kessel, did you say if these came kind of within the expected budgeted amounts?
Thank you, President Johnson. They are all within budget. We have a budget of about a half a million dollars for this project. This awarding these three items comes to about three and a half. We will use the remaining funds for items that are outside of this budget, such as desks and other incidentals. So this is within budget.
Okay, thank you. So we, we have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Let's see if we can get item F in here. This involves two job descriptions, and our HR coordinator, Mrs. Nomenek, I think that's going to present these. I think this is your first, first time up here officially, so welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. We have two new pos, job descriptions for patrol sergeant and for detective sergeant, and we have chosen to split them up into two different job descriptions because they are so different, the duties are so different. The detective sergeant, of course, will be more in charge of the investigative team, where the patrol sergeant will be in charge of the shift staff. Both positions will be rated the same as far as what their duties are, the level of duties that they have, judgment, decision-making, their education, working conditions, every aspect of their job description. their education, working conditions, every aspect of their job description is rated the same.
Okay. Well, commissioners, you do have the job descriptions in your meeting book. Do you have any comments or questions on these? If not, we would be looking for, this would have to be done with two motions, one for the patrol sergeant and then one for the detective sergeant. So would there be a motion to approve the patrol sergeant job classification?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the second. Any discussion here? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Also, then, would there be a motion to approve the job description for the detective sergeant?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? No discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, we have some timetable agenda items. And the first one at 5:00 is to hear a report on municipal court by Attorney Becky Weldon. So welcome.
Thank you. Mr. President, city commissioners, my name is Becky Weldon. I'm an associate attorney at Evil Toth Sichler, and I work directly under Matthew Coling in managing the municipal prosecution contract. The purpose of the memorandum we have submitted in this presentation is to update you all on the status of the prosecution contract as we are coming to a close on the first quarter. If you have any questions as I go through the slides, please just jump in. As you all are aware, we began prosecuting for the city of Dickinson January 1st, 2012. Currently, we have approximately 300 open case files, but that number fluctuates on a daily basis. The landscape of criminal activity has changed in Dickinson. This slide offers a comparison between the amount of criminal and traffic citations between 2011 and 2012 for the months of January, February, and March. The columns represent the cumulative total of traffic and criminal citations written by police officers. While March has the lowest cumulative total, it does have the highest criminal citation percentage. Along with greater numbers of citations being written and prosecuted comes a greater amount of fines and fees being collected. This slide offers a comparison between 2011 and 2012 for the months of January, February, and March.
Those are not cumulative numbers then, are they? So like, for example, March is nearly $35,000?
It is a cumulative number. Oh, no, I'm sorry. It is March individually, but
Individually, okay.
A cumulative total for both the criminal and traffic citation.
Right.
With the way the district court and municipal court clerks have done the scheduling, we end up in court three days per week. On Monday morning, we are in district court for ledger card hearings. These type of hearings are meant to address defendants that haven't complied with the terms of their sentence. For example, they haven't paid fines or served jail time. On Tuesday afternoons, we are in district court again for pretrial hearings for those defendants that have requested a jury trial and their cases therefore have been transferred to district court. On Thursday mornings, we're in municipal court for pretrial hearings and arraignments, and on Thursday afternoon, all our bench trials are scheduled. This slide actually has one correction. We've prosecuted seven bench trials since January 2012. We just prosecuted one late last week and had submitted this presentation prior, or excuse me, after, or prior to that bench trial. Additionally, we have a bench trial set for this Thursday and then for the week after that as well. We also have two jury trials set in district court for the month of May. Under North Dakota law, municipal court defendants are permitted to transfer their cases to district court in order to afford them an opportunity for jury trial. Municipal court doesn't handle jury trials. If a case is transferred to district court but then later settles prior to trial, a new statute that was enacted in August of 2011 allows the case to be sent back down or remanded to municipal court for the entry of judgment. If a case is remanded, the fines and fees that are associated with the case are then retained by the city of Dickinson. When we took over the municipal prosecution contract in January, we started remanding cases from district court that settled prior to trial. So far, we have remanded 30 cases. Those remanded cases have generated $16,475 for the city of Dickinson. Numbers aside, we've developed several initiatives when we took over the municipal prosecution contract. One of those initiatives was to develop a positive working relationship with the police department and court staff. Since taking over, we've met with all of the street patrol officers as a means of introduction and to address any concerns or questions that they may have for us. We've also submitted a couple of memorandums to the chief on field sobriety testing and evidentiary issues in domestic violence cases. Another initiative that we had was to update the city's criminal ordinances. As we are using them on a daily basis, we've become familiar with what needs updated. Updates to the DUI ordinance, which was recently approved by this commission. And we are also in the process of updating the littering, noise pollution, and exemptions, and exhibition driving ordinances. Another initiative that we had involves timeliness. We are current with all officer reports that had been submitted for charging determinations, and all our files are in compliance with scheduling orders that have been issued by the district court. Finally, we have taken on addressing a number of civil enforcement matters, primarily thus far we've been addressing fuel spills. We have three people dedicated to managing the contract, myself, everyone knows Matt, and our administrative assistant, Jeanne Algro. And that concludes the presentation. I'll take any questions if you have them.
Any comments or questions for Attorney Weldon?
What kind of cases are you seeing going to a jury trial? What are examples?
The two cases that we have set for jury trial are both DUIs.
Okay.
As far as the bench trials go, we've had a lot of administrative traffic violations. And then we also have, this week coming up, a driving under suspension case.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Kessel?
Becky, municipal court is currently held on Thursdays, and the caseloads that you just outlined are increasing. In your judgment, do you anticipate the addition of another day to handle these caseloads? And if so, do you have any prediction as terms of when that might need to take place?
I've discussed that with Judge Keough and court staff. I think their vision is to eventually have another court day with the way the numbers are increasing. I can't speak to when that may happen, but it does seem as we go on that the court days are getting longer and longer.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? In terms of the caseload right now, would you say you're current? Are you caught up?
We are current, yes.
Okay. Well, in the nearly 12 years I've been mayor, I don't think we've ever had a report on municipal prosecution. This is excellent, and I think your report was well-prepared and well-delivered, and it appears you're doing a great job even with Mr. Coling's direction, so.
In spite of?
In spite of.
Thank you.
So I think we're all pleased with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we can jump back to Tab 4, and Item G is a GSI workshop contract. And I think Mrs. Johnson's going to help with the introduction of that item.
Mr. President, commissioners, our assessing and planning departments have been working in an effort to provide their departments, as well as the public, an avenue in which to bridge GIS data from the engineering department with that of the Kama software that's in our assessing department. Ms. Brenda Wilson is here from GIS Workshop to discuss how her software can help assist with that.
Okay. Welcome, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. It's my honor to be here. Sean, it's nice to finally meet you in person. So I'm here on behalf of your city assessor, so just call me Joe. He's in Bismarck for some training, so. And so I wanted to give you a little history of how we ended up here tonight. Diane Bryans, the county tax director, started approaching me last October about her desire to have a web-based county site for the public to access property information. And so we came up and talked with her, and during that process, the county auditor also became interested in what we could provide as far as having tax information available at that same site and let the public be able to pay their taxes online. Additionally, the director of emergency services was in that same meeting, and he got very excited about the opportunity of having his information available in a separate tab on the same site but available to the public and really being able to share that information. During the course of the county commissioners approving that project, they expressed a desire that the city also consider partnering with us as well because they saw the need to share information across the city and the county. So I began to stalk both Shans. So as a result of that, Joe, your city assessor, contacted me in January, and we started talking about a web-based tool that would get the city assessor information, again, in a web-based environment, that would also work with planning and zoning, the GIS department. During that same timeframe, you hired a new GIS young lady, Loretta, and we got her involved in one of our GIS training workshops. And everything has kind of come to fruition. We're also working with Bill, your director of emergency services, and he'll be contracting with us soon on, we'll be doing 12 critical emergency services layers related to GIS for his department. So again, it's really an opportunity for the county, the city, and all the departments to be working with vendor, and one vendor, and sharing that information so that we all become aware of any redundancies across departments and also to allow you to become more efficient. So again, we're honored and thrilled for the opportunity to be able to help you with your GIS project. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Can you tell us how do you determine what your fee is?
It's based totally upon our costs. So we've been around for 14 years, and we've been doing it for a long time. So we've studied the information that was provided to us. We got some GIS layers and looked at what would be involved in maintaining those, and the pricing was based according to that.
No, I'm looking through the agreement. Maybe I'm missing it, but what is the price?
To get the, this particular site for the city is going to have two tabs, one that's going to be titled "The Assessor." That's going to be the city assessors tab. There's also going to be a tab specific to planning and zoning. And you'll be able to access that just through basically entering Dickinson.GISworkshop.com, so it is web-based. To develop the site itself, if you look at the last page of the scope of work, is $7,500. All the maintenance will be included through the end of this year. And then ongoing maintenance, which will include us hosting it on our triple redundant servers and making all the updates necessary, is $4,500 per year on an annual basis.
Okay. Well, we're working with these new pads up here, and I'm not quite accustomed to it yet, so I'm not finding all the information.
Going paperless is painless. I do have a copy of the scope of work in paper form if you'd like to see it.
I think we have that too here, so that's fine.
We have a redundant process, too.
There you go. And normally, each one of these tabs would be a separate project at a separate cost. What we did for the city of Dickinson is we're basically providing you the planning and zoning tab at no cost, bottom line.
President Johnson, it might be easier if you pull up the memo provided by Assessor Hirschfeld, all the bid information, including the costs that were just reviewed, as is included in that memo.
That's in here?
Yes.
Well, I've got the agreement up, but, okay.
There's three documents associated with this item, and the third is a memo that Mr. Hirschfeld authored.
I am trying to back up, Commissioner Steiner. I'm hitting the backup arrow.
Backing up, Aaron.
You can still have my paper.
Oh, I've got bad news for you, Brenda. I just deleted you.
[laughing]
That's not going anyplace. I'll trust your numbers. Oh, okay, I got it to back up. Okay. So while you've heard her report, the introduction, are there any other comments or questions? I'm not going to go into Joe's memo, I know. Okay, so we'd be looking for a motion to approve this contract, then. Is there such a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any other discussion?
President, I think we're going to find that the public will really use this tool. I think there'll be a lot of use on it.
Okay. Any other comments? Not, we'll vote on the motion. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We look forward to working with you.
Okay, we'll go back to the timetable agenda. We have a 5:15 item. This is a rezone petition for Badlands Properties. It's also the second reading of ordinance 1456. Mr. Corton, would you introduce it, and then we'll ask for public comment.
Mr. President, commissioners, this rezone petition is from GI to General Commercial for Property described as Lot 1, Block 1, Energy Center 1st, and is situated off of 27th Street East. City staff last Thursday sent an additional notice notifying the abutting property owners of the 50-foot separation requirement per city's fire code to provide additional noticing with respect to that issue. City staff recommends approval, and there has been no changes from the first reading.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corton. At this time, we'll declare public comment period open. Anybody that wishes to comment regarding this proposed ordinance may do so now. Just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? There's no one from the public, so we'll declare the comment period closed, and ask if there are any comments by city staff or city commissioners. If not, would there be a motion regarding second reading and final passage of ordinance 1456? So move. We move the approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We will go back to the non-t timetable agenda, and Item I is, no, Item H, Energy Impact Office Grant. And Mr. Kessel, are you introducing this?
I will, President Johnson. This is kind of an exciting grant. The city applied for the latest grant round from the Oil Impact Office, the Land Board, as it's oftentimes known. The state legislator set aside $7 million for emergency projects related to emergency response. Based on the overwhelming response to those grants, they actually awarded $12 million in grants. So we are, I sit here before you asking that the city of Dickinson accept a grant award of $1.5 million to construct a public safety center here in Dickinson. Our grant was actually authored by Fire Chief Seavock.
Our grant was actually authored by Fire Chief Seavock, in close concert with Police Chief Dossinger. So I commend them both for a well-written document. They also had to present this document in front of the board, and obviously did a very nice job. The money would be used for... We already have land acquired for this building, so the monies could be used for design, site work, and/or construction. We have a two-year window in which to spend this money, and the total project costs are yet to be determined, but the best estimate is between $6 and $8 million. If the city commission does accept this grant, we have until the end of the month to do so. That's why it's on the agenda tonight. We would move forward with the design of the project and follow the natural course of events after that. So we could be seeing the use of these funds no later than two years from today. And that would be... Conclude my report, unless there's questions.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jackson?
What are we looking at right now for the balance of financing?
Right now, there's... We don't know the balance, because it hasn't been designed, so that estimate is the best case that I can give you. We also are... Later in this report, I'll be giving another report that's... There's another grant round. Oil impact dollars for oil hub cities are available. We are slated for approximately $4 to $5 million in that project. Certainly, this is one we could put forward. I'm not sure that we should. We have several other projects as well. I would anticipate that we would have to finance a good portion of this project. Because the two entities that would be housed here would be our police and fire station, there's not fees that generally can be collected to buy this down. Property taxes, we try to avoid that as much as possible. So my anticipation is we would finance and use sales tax for the balance.
I think we're going to have an issue that if the Public Works Building would consume, I think, most of our sales tax money to do the Public Works Building. And I think at this point, we don't have an immediate funding source for the balance of this building. Now, that doesn't mean we shouldn't accept the money. But when we look at our funding sources, we can only look to the end of the state's present biennium, which is June 30 of 2013. And so the monies that Mr. Kessel mentioned would be kind of the last of the hub city oil impact monies coming to us. We've, you know, tentatively earmarked the first $5 million of those monies towards the wastewater treatment facility. We're expecting that to be a $35 million facility. So we've got $5 million going there. We're still undecided where the rest of the money would come from there. So I think the correct answer is, we don't know yet, but we have to have some faith that the state, when they look at the next biennium, are going to send a lot more money towards oil hub cities than just the amount that they've sent now. Now, we're debt-free as a city, but I don't think we're going to be able to remain debt-free and do this impact unless the state turns out to be much more generous than, you know, than I'm anticipating. But I think we should, you know, we should accept this money and get started, but, you know, we really wouldn't know for certain just how much we're going to be able to fund ourselves, and how much we'd have to borrow. And this one is, you know, is a general fund obligation, and the general fund has really no other dedicated revenue streams, like the wastewater treatment plant. We do have revenues that come into that fund, so... And those revenues are growing. So that one can possibly carry in service and debt without increasing, you know, cost to our existing users. But the Public Works Building and the Public Safety Building are both general fund obligations.
The Public Works Building does house our water department, so we potentially could use fee revenue to fund a portion of that. But generally, I would certainly agree with you.
Well, and that would work if you didn't have a $35 million project that'll come first.
Plus a pumping building that we have to...
And we got a pumping building issue, maybe with Southwest Water. We do have the... Again, though, we can apply our half percent sales tax towards this, and we do have monies there. I think we have sufficient monies there that will be able to cover the Public Works Building. So... But there's lots of projects emerging. Mr. Kessel and I just, this past week, started working on a kind of a new spreadsheet that I think we can, in a few weeks, share with the whole commission, so you have an idea of all the projects we're looking at and where they would be funded. It's, I think, a spreadsheet that also we can start to use with the governor's office and the representatives of the governor's office and our local legislative group. But I would encourage, you know, us to accept this award, and we have two years to figure out just how we're going to fund this. What else, Mr. Kessel?
I couldn't have said it better myself.
I didn't think so. Doesn't stop you from trying. That was both a long answer to your question, is we don't know for certain, you know.
Well, you know, the spreadsheet that you talk about and probably a lot more planning tools are really going to be necessary in the coming months here. We will be challenged a little bit more, I think.
Well, we've got, you know, the major transportation projects hanging out there. You know, the Reliever Route or Bypass Route, or both of those. We've got the Exit 61 interchange. We've got the Highway 22 underpass. You know, there's lots of big dollar projects out there that I don't think there's any way that the state can realistically expect that citizens of Dickinson would bear all those infrastructure costs themselves. And we will need significant help, assistance from the state in the next biennium, certainly much larger than the amounts we've received in this biennium.
I'd be remiss in saying that part of the financing scenario is heavily dependent upon the results of the June Measure 2 election as well. That obviously will play a part or a role in how we move forward.
Okay. Other comments or questions on this grant? Would there be a motion to approve the grant award?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. I think we can get Item I in before we go to the 5:30. So this is a... Has to do with utility bore. And Mr. Kessel, would you present that?
I certainly will. Site number is related to the need for an expanding city of Dickinson. We will be projected to jump the interstate on the western side of our community, and in order to do so, that requires utilities to be extended to that location to service that property. In order to do that, the best way would be to bring some water and sewer from the south side of the interstate bore underneath the interstate, and then provide those services for the land north of the interstate, both east and west of that Interstate Exchange. What you have before you this evening is a request from Roars Development, who is doing the development west of the... North and west of the Western Interstate Exchange. They have requested that the city of Dickinson participate in that expense, which is approximately $800,000, to do so. We have tentatively agreed or put forth before you today our willingness to finance about $400,000 of that request. So we would pay about half. We reserve the right to assess a fee to other land that is not owned by Roars Development in order, like, a special assessment, so that we can recover this $400,000. If, you know, that land that's out there is in flux, the ownership changes or can change, and if Roars happens to be the developer, the likelihood of us recovering this initial $400,000 becomes a little more remote. But if another owner arises, we would have the ability to recoup some of these costs. I believe there's a letter from Roars Development as part of your packet. There's also an outline of expenses that they have provided to you. And unless Attorney... Or, excuse me, Engineer Soren has an estimate of the amount of land that would be serviced, it would be our recommendation that the city of Dickinson provide $400,000 to make sure that this project happens, and reserve the right to recover that $400,000 by using special assessments as that tool in the future. So I believe that will conclude my report. Unless there's questions.
Do you have any comments or questions for Mr. Kessel?
Mr. Kessel, unlike our development impact fee, where we have the surety that the money that we give out is going to come back in special assessments, we don't have that guarantee. So it could just be a $400,000 expense that we don't see coming back, at least in the form of special assessments. That could be correct. It's hard to predict what will happen. There will be a... If the commission agrees, there will be a development agreement that will memorialize the arrangement that we're talking about today. But there is the possibility that we will not recover this $400,000. It just depends upon the amount of land that's serviced and how much is owned by Roars. Did that answer your question?
Well, and I think it's not wrong to say that the tremendous tax base that is likely to be created with this project is really significant. That and other benefits that I think our citizens will see from this development, I think warrants it. Having said that, I'm a little bit concerned about the future. I'm fine with this, but we really need some policy, because we're going to have other situations like this in the next couple of years that will be significant infrastructure things, that the method of payment isn't going to be quite so clear all the time. So I would hope, you know, you guys don't have much to do these days. I would hope we could work on a policy in that regard.
Thank you for mentioning that, Commissioner Jackson. There are two different types of taxes specifically that will be augmented by the project that's being planned, assuming we still have property taxes after June. Property taxes would certainly be enhanced, and also sales tax and occupancy tax and hospitality tax, for that matter, would all be enhanced if this project happens the way that they have planned it out. So we would recoup our investment of $400,000, even if it is a grant. We'll recoup that manyfold. Sean, can you give any indication, the type of businesses, just for the people watching at home, what the development entails, ballparkish, general terms? Yeah, I'll have to be broad with that. Commissioner Altman, they have a... I'll go back to what they've submitted to, planning and zoning, and Planner Cortan, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the vast majority of that initial project, I believe there's about 154 acres of essentially retail development that will occur, commercial development, for sure. They do own more property than that, and it will transition into some residential aspects west of the initial development. So included in that, that commercial development, like I said, will be some retail. I think they have plans for restaurants and potentially hotels as well.
When we met with them, they indicated that, you know, they may be able to make some public announcements as early as sometime in May. But, you know, they're dealing with some well-known companies and major companies, and, you know, they kind of set the agenda when it comes to the timing of announcements. But, you know, I'd say it's a pretty exciting development. I would concur with Mr. Kessel that even if that development extended no further than that immediate Exit 59 area, we would more than recoup our investment. I do think it's... If they come close to developing what they've indicated as possibilities, I think we're going to see land adjacent to their development become very desirable land to development to develop. So I think we're going to recoup all or a good portion of that $400,000 investment, either through special assessments or hookup fees of some sort, because that'll be... That'll add a lot of value to that area, just being able to get under the interstate with services. So it could be a pretty exciting time. But hopefully, you know, in a month or so, you know, we can actually be talking about But it didn't...